Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, November 24th, to order. All members are present at this time prior to transmitting the Treasury warrants 21, 21A, 22, and 22A. I'd like to take this moment to publicly acknowledge once again that all members of the Board, including our manager and Beverly, are wearing an article of clothing that is purple, and that is out of respect and honor of pancreatic cancer awareness and epilepsy awareness for the month of November. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to -- for the transmitting of the Treasury warrants as I've previously read.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, and all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to our first appointment, which is with Karen L. Rashes, Principal Assessor, with reference to the public hearing for the discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So we're here this evening on behalf of the Board of Assessors, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to present the information to the Board of Selectmen so that you can vote a residential factor. The residential factor adopted by the Board governs the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by the allocated residential and commercial property class owners. After careful analysis and review, the Board of Assessors recommends to the Board of Selectmen a classification shift of 175%, which would result in a minimum residential factor of .768121 for fiscal year 2015. This shift conforms with the guidelines of Prop. 2 and 1/2 and is consistent with prior year's tax policies. To give you a little background this year on the assessed values, our analysis, we used calendar year 2013 sales data, and I'm happy to say that things have started to stabilize and increase once again with the markets come back. The average residential values increased approximately 6%. And the analysis on the commercial industrial market has showed stabilizing, but nothing major as far as any way of increasing or decreasing. On a global basis, there were pockets of areas that we looked at, but nothing on a global basis across the Board. Traditionally, the Board of Selectmen have shifted the maximum allowable to the commercial, industrial, and personal property class, and that would be the recommendation of the Board of Assessors this evening. If you would like in the packets, I'm happy to walk through and discuss the backup documentation and pages on this. So the first page would be a comparison of the property values by class, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property, in comparing last year's values to this year's. This would show that the residential class, and residential, and I say that includes not only just single-family, it's apartments, condos, vacant land, everything's lumped into the residential class, went from $2.6 billion to $2.8 billion. That's a 6.7% increase. The commercial class increased roughly 4.9 million, about 3%, 3.4%. Industrial is a little deceptive here. It looks like that there was a decrease. We did not decrease the industrial class by any global percentage. That was more a settlement of some long outstanding appellate board cases and a decision from the appellate board on another large case. So they were more individual properties and not a global decrease to industrial properties. And our personal property values increased roughly 5%. So our total assessed value for real and personal property in 2014 was $3.5 billion, and this year it's increased to $3.7 billion. The next page will show us that our tax levy is $69,363,100. And what this chart shows you is the percentages that the value makes up of the total. So this is the residential classes, actually $2.8 billion of value, and the 875 million is the commercial, industrial, and personal class. So the residents make up 76.3842% of the total, where the commercial, industrial, and CIP make up 23.6158%. If you shift to 175%, then the residents would only be paying 58.6724% of the levy, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property class would pay the remaining 41.3276%. On the next page, it breaks it down a little bit further with what the shifts would translate into. If you did not shift and you had a single tax rate, the tax rate would be $18.71 per thousand for both residential and commercial class. That would seem to have a large burden on the residents because that would be a $2,000 increase to them, where then the commercial class would receive a $9,000 decrease. If you shifted 150%, you can see the resulting tax rates would be 1582 and 2806, which would still be a substantial increase of $915 to the residential class and a $2,400 decrease to the commercial class. If you shifted 160%, the tax rate would result in a 1524 tax rate for residents and a 2993 for the CIP, which would be a $695 increase and a $1,000 decrease to the commercial class. But if you went to the 175, which is the maximum shift allowed, it would be a $14.37 residential tax rate and a 3274 commercial tax rate, which would result in a $364 and 11 cent increase to the average residential home and a $993 increase to the average commercial home. When I say average, that is, there will be some above, some below, some values have increased more than others if they took out building permits, et cetera. But below there, you can see the increase from fiscal year 14 to 15 on the average single-family home. The tax rate increased 13 cents, and the average bill would go up $364. Same with the commercial. The commercial rate decreased 30 cents, and their tax bill increased $993 to a $23,919. Just kind of a point of information, Wilmington, the Department of Revenue does an analysis every year as to what the average bill is throughout the Commonwealth, and we're number 110th out of roughly 327 towns that were included in the analysis. Our tax rate is actually a little bit less than the state average, and our average assessed value was just slightly above what the state average was for fiscal year 14. They don't have the data available yet for 15. The next page is just a little bit of a historical look from 2000 to 2015 as to what the tax levy has done in comparison with the assessed values. As you can see, in fiscal year 2009, the average assessed home was 381,000, and it had decreased down to 349,000 in 2013. So our assessments do get adjusted based on what's going on in the market. And this year, the average being 380, looks like we're back to the times back in fiscal '09. However, one piece to take into consideration when considering the averages, the new homes that have been being added over the past few years are no longer a ranch or a cape. They're, you know, 550 to $750,000 colonials. So that does kind of skew the average. It increases that. And the last page shows you a little bit of a historic look at what the residential and commercial class have made up as a percentage share of value in town, which from 2002 to the current, you can see it's ranged anywhere from 72% to 78%, this year being 76% on the residential. And the tax levy share has ranged anywhere from the amount that they actually end up paying, 52% to 60%, this year being 58%, provided that the historical shift of shifting to the max of 175% is once again voted. So if you did vote the historical shift with a tax levy of the $69,363,000, we would have roughly a $4244 excess levy capacity. So at this point, the Board of Assessors' recommendation once again is the minimum residential factor of the 768121.
Thank you very much for that detailed presentation. All the members of the Board, including the manager, do have the packet here in front of us. Before we entertain any sort of motion, I will open it up to the Board as it is a public hearing and also for any public comments. I will start with the Board, and I'll start to my right. If anyone would like to make a comment or ask a question?
Sure. I have a couple of questions and a comment. With regard to the value comparison, and you made mention of it, but I'm not sure that I caught it all, when you explained the difference in the decrease in the industrial sector and that percentage of change. And I heard you mention tax abavements, but can you run that by me again?
Absolutely. So what I said was, on the industrial class, we did not lower or increase values globally by, through the analysis, it looked like a pretty stable market. But the decrease was more because of the settlement of some outstanding, long outstanding appellate board cases where there was a reduction in value, and then we also had a decision of a case where there was a reduction in value. So those two parcels were pretty much ones that had driven, which was the $3 million decrease which resulted in that negative.
Okay. Very good. So it was, just to repeat what I think you said, a couple of appellate board cases account for that difference almost entirely?
Right. Yes. Yep. And actually, in the residential class, that 6.7% is different than on the page of the single-family tax, because when you're comparing the whole residential class versus the single-family class, it was like a 6% increase on the average single-family home, 6.7% on the whole class. That's because we had the apartment building on Balladvale that had burnt down, and so last year that was removed from the tax rolls. This year it was put back on, and we also increased some property, the apartment buildings, and we also had new condos. So there was a culmination of things that went into that category.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. And then, at another point in the presentation, you had mentioned some sort of survey or other information that is available somewhere, and you mentioned that we were 110 out of all the cities and towns in Massachusetts. I think there's 351 of us?
So there's 351. However, at the time of their analysis, I think there was only like 327 tax rates approved. So they, we were ranked at that point with what was approved. There were still some stragglers that weren't done yet.
And ranked in terms, what's the criteria for that ranking?
Sure. That's, every year, they rank all the cities and towns based on their average tax bill. So, and they use the same criteria, so they're only looking and comparing average single-family home. So it's only the single-family home category, and they compare it across the state. So they just purely take total property value in that class divided by the number of parcels in that class. We are not a Weston. That was, average tax bill was $17,000 a year, so we are only at 110th, which was a good thing.
Right. And I appreciate that clarification. To me, and this kind of leads into the comment that I have, is that, you know, every year when we, when we take the recommendation of the Board of Assessors and we maximize the shift to the CIP, we're always cognizant and emphasizing to folks that the purpose of the vote is to try to minimize the burden on the residential taxpayer, notwithstanding the fact that the value in town is, as between residential and CIP, the relative value keeps increasing on the residential side. And the point that you make about being, you know, 110 out of 327, or, you know, who knows exactly where we would fall in if we're all 351? But when you look at, from a practical standpoint, what the offerings are in town for that average residential tax bill, to me, that's what makes me feel good about the job that the town is doing, from the administration to department heads to the various boards and commissions in town. I mean, that list obviously doesn't take into account the fact that we have free all-day kindergarten. It doesn't take into account that we don't do some of the user fees that some of these other towns do. So as much as I want to make sure we put focus on where the purpose of this vote tonight is on the classification shift, I think it also is worthwhile, when we do this, to point out, geez, I think the town's doing a pretty darn good job at, you know, getting a bang for the buck. So I just want to offer that comment.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Newhouse. He kind of stole the thunder of what I think all of us are going to say up here, that the taxpayers in Wilmington do get a good bang for their buck in what they get. I appreciate the breakdown in what you've done here with the history, because it gives us kind of an idea of where we're at compared to, you know, 15 years ago, and what you've done with the Board of Assessors and all this. It's good work, and again, he stole the thunder. I think, I think we in Wilmington are pretty fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I wussed it all, but it's all right, you know? But no, seriously, I'm saying is, I, you know, agree with Mr. Newhouse said, and they're basically the same. It's, you get a great bang for your buck in the town of Wilmington, and it's a great community. We have three interchanges in the town, you know, more so than any other city or town other than Boston. You could go all the way up I-93 to Salem, New Hampshire, you know? So I said it before, and it's not like repeating myself. Some people say, is it a blessing or a curse? I mean, you know, everyone has their own opinion on that. But I think for the benefit of the town, Wilmington's a desirable place to live. You know, you have access anywhere in the community, and, you know, we are going to get traffic. That's, it's going to happen, you know? And it's, I've lived in town all my life, and I've seen the increase in traffic, so we've got to kind of control that to a certain degree. And, I mean, it's, how much can you really control? But for the most part, it's a great community that we're living in, and, you know, we get a great education for our children, and I think it's just a great community. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's also a great community to establish and run a business, and evidenced by the number of businesses that are thriving and doing well here and that are coming here. I guess I won't, I resist the opportunity to say in spite of. I'm awfully glad that we have the opportunity to exercise the shift. You know, the shift puts it, it makes it equitable for the businesses, or more equitable for the businesses and the residents, to share in the burden of funding the community's needs throughout the year. But while the businesses are bearing a little bit more of the quote-unquote "pain" by virtue of the shift, they're enjoying the fruits of, you know, I guess, the labor of the community. They enjoy the residents, they enjoy the community itself. So it's, you know, it's a mutually beneficial symbiotic relationship that the businesses and the residents share. And again, I'm awfully glad that we have the opportunity to exercise the shift. If I may, Karen, you mentioned, I think, let me make sure I'm seeing it right. So, yeah, the average, and I know average is difficult, because everyone's going to think that this means that's what's going to happen to them, and someone's going to get more and someone's going to get less. But the average increase using the shift, if we exercise the 175, will be around 364 more over the course of the year.
Correct.
And that's, is that primarily based on, and you probably said it, but I just didn't hear it right, is that primarily based on the fact that we're seeing values go up? Is that, is that a dotted line connection to the values going up in the community?
Sure. It's kind of a culmination of things. There is, the value increase is also that the residents are picking up a little bit more of the percentage this year because they're making up more of the share. So when we shifted last year, it was like 56%. This year it's 58%. So that's a little piece of it as well.
I guess, yeah. It's, values going up are good. If you're a homeowner, it's good for your equity, it's good for resale, if you're looking at that at some point. But the, with the good comes the bad, and sometimes values going up means you get to pay a little bit more tax. But as my colleagues have all said, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, and I think that's a nominal increase to continue to offer the high level of services that we all take for granted in town. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I stand corrected, we have four entrance and exits off I-93, not three. So I just had to think about that for a quick second. All right, thank you.
No problem. So thank you very much for that. I don't want to be redundant and repeat all the major highlights. All of my colleagues have pretty much covered it, but I do want to thank you very much for being here tonight and for giving the presentation. Obviously, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it now to the public before we take the motion here as a Board. Does anyone have a question or a comment that they'd like to make? Yes?
Just a clarification. I've got a few questions and comments, but the way I heard you, you're saying that the residents are going to be getting a tax increase?
Correct.
And values have gone up?
Correct.
And so, when we consider the values of the town, we take into consideration that people are having less children. As a matter of fact, the new high school's going to be sized to educate about 300 less students than it once did.
I don't take that into consideration in establishing market value.
Yeah, I've just taken it into consideration for my comments. I guess the question is, do the Selectmen have the liberty or the right by law to not increase the taxes?
Is that a question that you want me to answer? As far as, do they have the right not to increase taxes? Their duty tonight is to vote a shift, and town meeting is what votes the budget. So this is really more of a shift as to who's paying what portion of the tax, as opposed to the saying that there's no tax increase. I think that would be something done through how much you spend.
Is the shift taking the percentage away from the residents and putting it on commercial, industrial, or vice versa? Because I wasn't really hearing you too good.
Okay. So the shift, where the residents, if we did not have a shift, we did not do classification, the residential homeowner would be paying, we would only have a single tax rate in town, and the tax rate would be over 18, it would be $18.71. If we do shift and reallocate how much that both classes are going to pay, so as it would stand right now, the residential class would pay 76.3842% of the total of the levy that needs to be raised, and the commercial class would pay 23.6158%. But by shifting, it lowers the amount that the residential class will pay to 58.6724%. And the commercial industrial class will pay 41.3276%. So the purpose of the shift is, basically, this is, this is how much you have to pay, this is how much you have to raise, who's paying what portion of it. So the shift shifts that the residents will pay less of a portion, even though they make up a greater amount of the value.
And is that based on the fact that the town has the right to raise taxes 2 and 1/2% on the tax levy?
There's a combination of things. This shift really doesn't have anything to do with the tax levy calculation. This is, once the levy is, once the levy is established, who's paying what part of it? So the levy is last year's levy plus Prop. 2 and 1/2, plus any new growth, plus any debt exclusions or overrides, to give what the tax levy will be.
Yeah. I guess the question that I have is, if the town is meeting its financial commitments now, and values have gone up, does the town, have you done an analysis to see if the town might choose to not raise the taxes by 2 and 1/2%?
I have not done an analysis to, do a different scenario if you did raise or you didn't, because that was all established at town meeting, to say, this is how much money we need to fulfill our budget. And that's something done during the budget cycle, and then I have the levy to work with, which is pretty much just doing the math to come up with what percentage share, do you want different classes to allocate to each class for their share of the levy? So the levy is kind of independent of this. It's what's used in calculating the tax rate, but that's already been pre-established. That's not something the Board of Assessors establishes.
And I guess the comment that I have is, I see tremendous growth in the town. I see values rising all the time. I see large apartment complexes being built. I see industrial places being built and commercial properties being developed. But yet, we never see a tax decrease.
So the, if you have a large, if you have more value in a particular class, then there's more people to pay that share of the pie. But there's not necessarily a decrease in the tax, because that's also driven by what your, what your levy is. It's kind of a two-piece puzzle. You have what your levy is every year. So start with last year's, plus your Prop. 2 and 1/2, plus your new growth, plus your debt exclusions, any overrides. That establishes what your levy is, and then the new values establish how much each person's going to pay of that, of that pie. So if you get a whole bunch of new value in the industrial class, then they have more people to help pay their share of that 41%. If you, in this instance, the residents, the residential class increased a little bit more than the, it was last year, because we had more development. When you have, when the residents make up 2.8 billion of the total 3.7 billion in the property class, then, and you increase those values on the average of 6%, that's going to come up to higher than what the increase would be on the commercial industrial class. So that's just reallocating that there's more people to pay that, that portion of the, of the pie, so to speak.
Yeah. It's nice to have more people paying their share or their piece of the pie, but I once again heard you say plus the 2 and 1/2%. It would be nice to have an analysis done so that the Selectmen might consider not raising the taxes, that 2 and 1/2% that they're allowed, and actually engaging in an effort to provide some type of tax relief in that type of form to the people of Wilmington, because it seems like the taxes just keep escalating and escalating. We could, we can do comparisons to other towns, but as I travel across the country to other cities, and they have a lot of services too, they're nowhere near the taxes that we're paying. So the question that I ask is...
Kevin, I'm going to interrupt you because I'll let you go on for a while. We're going to stick with the town of Wilmington. I appreciate your analysis of other communities, but we're talking specifically tonight about a tax shift. I believe that Ms. Rashes has gone through great effort to answer your questions, and we're continuing to run on here. We're talking about a shift, and we haven't taken that vote yet, and we haven't even deliberated that, that point yet. So at this point, you have a specific question that hasn't been answered?
My question to you is this. Would you make a commitment to the taxpayers of Wilmington to perform an analysis to see if this year, or this coming fiscal year, might be the year that you do not have to take advantage of that 2 and 1/2% increase in taxes to provide some type of relief for the people of Wilmington?
Sure. I think that that question was already answered, but perhaps not to the gentleman's satisfaction. I think what Ms. Rashes pointed out was that the budgetary process is what provides a very detailed analysis as to what resources are needed and how those resources ought to be allocated in order to provide the offerings that the residents of Wilmington want. And every town meeting after, every departmental budget has been formulated, reviewed, and presented to the Finance Committee, after the town manager has come to the Board of Selectmen and presented his budget, and then all of those appropriations are presented to the Finance Committee in a public forum. And then after that process, we go to town meeting and we appropriate, you know, capital appropriations, capital improvements, the regular budget. I mean, the detailed analysis is a compilation of months, which nobody should misunderstand the truth. The truth is that the town does it every year through the budget process, and every year, folks at town meeting vote to appropriate those funds, which results in a certain tax to the residents and to the businesses. So, I mean, when you talk about open town meeting being the purest form of democracy, you know, for better or for worse, that is absolutely true in terms of the budget. If you want to slash the budget by, you know, $1 million, $3 million, or $10 million, which is going to result in some sort of tax break, the process is there to be able to do it. I would suggest that for many, many years now, the will hasn't been there to do it, because residents who show up to, you know, various budget hearings and show up to town meetings... meeting have a fundamental understanding that the cost of insurance doesn't remain stagnant, that there's an increase to the cost of insurance, that people have, you know, the, a, a limited right to a cost of living adjustment, you know, as a general rule of thumb. So I think that folks recognize that when the cost of funding retirements over the course of years, when people, you know, continue to live longer lives, I think the average person gets that and they show up to town meeting and they say, okay, you've convinced me what it takes to continue to provide the services that we've become accustomed to and so we're going to vote yes. And anybody who wants to attend that town meeting and has, you know, a different idea as, you know, everyone that's sitting in this room has done, then I guess it's up to convince town meeting. But I, I just don't want, you know, that when a question is asked, will you commit to doing an analysis? When you ask the question that way, you know, that the answer can be, the answer can be very unclear. So I think what, what I would rather do is just say, we stand by the very process that provides that analysis year after year after year and we'll see you at town meeting in the finance committee hearings. That's the way I look at it.
Thank you.
Just wanted to get the names of the two companies that won the appeal against the town for the tax reduction.
She's what?
You mentioned that there were two properties, industrial, I thought. You said that there was a ruling, an appellate ruling where because of that, the residents are now bearing more of a burden. Can you share those companies, the names of those?
Yep, that's public record and it's in our abatement certificate book. The 200, end of, 200 Ballaville Street. We had three years of a hearing at that and we won two years and we, they gave them a reduction in the last year, which resulted in a reduction this year. And the other one was AD Industrial. There was issues with the contamination. That was a case back to 2007 that we had just settled.
Okay, so I think the 200 Ballaville, would that be Agfa?
The, the former Agfa building.
Okay. And just to point out that she mentioned that she did not do an analysis on that. So I think that would, that would benefit the town.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, hearing no further public comments, I will close the hearing. And at this point, would we like to make a motion as a board?
Madam Chair, I would just suggest that the board accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors to adopt a residential factor of .768121 for fiscal year 2015, which results in a classification shift of 1.75%.
I'll make a motion to that exact effect.
Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I can get it to you tomorrow.
Moving on to our next appointment with Mr. Frank West with reference to the Toys for Tots program.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking, you and the Board of Selectmen and the town manager for taking time out of the schedule for a brief talk on our annual Toys for Tots activities. First, I'd like to introduce Staff Sergeant John Tipton. He's the area coordinator for our Middlesex and Essex Counties for the Marine Corps Toys for Tots program. And I think he want, he has a presentation. I'd also like to tell you a little bit about the program that they're running.
To start off, I have a certificate. I'd like to present the, the board, if I may. United States Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Commander's Award. The United States Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize the town of Wilmington for outstanding support of the 2014 Marine Toys for Tots program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring a joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. Signed, John F. Kelly, Lieutenant General, United States Marine Corps, Commander, Marine Corps Reserves. As Mr. West has expressed, I am the coordinator for the Middlesex and Essex Counties. A little bit background on myself, I just transferred here from Okinawa, spending two years over there. I am an active-duty Marine on the INI staff. We currently just got our warehouse and we will be starting distributions on December 1st. Last year, we assisted somewhere in the neighborhood of 68 or 69,000 children from both counties and distributed close to 189,000 toys to those families. This year, we're looking at about the same, maybe a few additional resources or families donated to.
And as far as our local program, what, as you know, my wife and I, Karen, have been coordinating the program both in Wilmington and Tuxbury for the past 18 years now. And just to let you know that you'll be seeing, if you haven't already, you'll be seeing a lot of these posters up around town. One here at Town Hall, and thank you again, Mr. Hall, for allowing a toy box here at Town Hall. Several of the, the schools have boxes, the senior center, Market Basket, both in Wilmington and Tuxbury, a lot of the local businesses have toy boxes. And basically, it's real simple. I mean, if, if anybody has a new unwrapped toy that they'd like to donate, it goes into the box. What'll happen from there is we'll be picking up the boxes and the toys, giving them to Staff Sergeant Tipton and his crew, and they'll be distributing so that hopefully kids that need toys will get them by, no later than the 20th, I think?
No later than the 19th.
19th, excuse me. If anybody wants, any of the businesses want, want to have a toy box at, from us, feel free to call us. Our number's in the book, 978-658-1754 is our home number. But we just want to let, you know, thank the board and the town of Wilmington for their continued generosity. One event, you know, typically we have events at our real estate office and this year what we're going to do is on Sunday, December 14th, we're in process of finalizing the details, but we'll have a bunch of wrestlers, professional wrestlers from New England Championship Wrestling coming down. And basically what they'll be doing is doing an autograph for a, a new unwrapped toy. And we'll also have music by Amp 103. They'll be there for the afternoon as well. So that'll be at West Real Estate, 386 Main Street from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. on Sunday, December 14th. The other thing is, is that if, if people need toys, actually, want I, should I turn that to you or would you like me to?
That's fine. We have a local website. If family is interested in receiving toys, what will end up happening is they go to toysfortots.org and on the very top, there's a banner that says, Request a Toy. They click on that and then they'll have to go through some drop-down boxes, Massachusetts, Middlesex or Essex Counties, and then that'll bring them to our local website. From there, again, same process, click, request a toy. They'll fill out the sheet that's on the, or the request form and that'll get uploaded. Once that's done, what we do is we send that sheet to a nonprofit in the local area, of their local area, because we do not have the ability to ensure that the, the family is qualified for the program. What they'll do is they'll, they will vet the, the family and once we get thumbs up from that, we will put the order together and the nonprofit will pick the order up from our warehouse distribution site and distribute it to the family directly.
With that, I don't know if the board or Madam Chair, if you have any questions or...
I just want to say thank you very much for being here. Obviously, this is an incredible service that you provide to many families and children, you know, across the state and specifically this area and appreciate the effort that you put in with your family to bring this to fruition in town. Certainly, anyone else on the board is welcome to make a comment, but I just wanted to offer sincere heartfelt thank you. And thank you very much for that on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Yes, Sergeant, thank you for your work with Toys for Tots and thank you for your service to your country. This is a great program and unfortunately, I think you're going to be a little extra busier this year with what's going on with the economy and everything. So thank you and continue to do what you do.
Thank you, sir. We will.
If I could, Madam Chair, very briefly, I also want to echo Lou's sentiments. Thank you very much for your service, Staff Sergeant. And impressive numbers, 180,000 toys last year and I suspect, like Lou said, you probably see more of that, more than that this year. I also want to compliment Frank and Karen and your family for taking this project on for how many years now, 13?
18.
18 years. God bless you. That's, that's a wonderful endeavor.
Someday, we'll get it right.
Keep on trying. But I, Frank and I had a conversation a few weeks back and as much as it's important at this time of year, it's the holidays, it's Christmas and, and toys, and you think about gift giving and you think about every kid deserves to have a gift under the tree. This is a program that lives throughout the year. There are, there are children that, you know, maybe birthday parties or fall victim of fire or some other tragedy and Toys for Tots steps, steps up in those circumstances as well. It might be in July or August, but when there's a need, Toys for Tots is there. And I think you and I had had that conversation. It was important and I wanted to bring that up again, that people can reach out to you or to, through toysfortots.org at any time throughout the year, not just at Christmas.
Yes, sir.
Very well. I'd want to make that point and again, thank you both for, for coming here tonight.
Okay, anyone else?
Just, just echo everyone's, you know, thanks, you know, the West family, they've been doing it for a long time, 18 years. Thank you. And I really appreciate what Lou said, everything you do for our country, not only for Toys for Tots, but you guys protect our country. You, you know, you guys do everything, not only in Marines, the whole branch of the armed services. And once again, appreciate everything that you guys and gals do out there every day.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I think it's all been said, but I'd just say thank you to both of you. Great job and good luck for another successful Christmas season.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And, you know, and more importantly, you know, thank you for the compliments back to myself and my family, but at the end of the day, we're putting out probably about 75, 80 empty boxes and by some miracle, they get filled by the generosity of both the residences, businesses of the local community here, both in Wilmington and we also coordinate for Tuxbury. But it's, it's through that miracle that the program is a success. So we're just a conduit to get that empty box to a place so that it can get filled. So I did want, on behalf of Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Tipton, I just wanted to give these Toys for Tots commanders points. You just pass those out.
Thank you.
It's just something, you know, and the last thing, just, you know, I know Wilmington has been a very generous community and, you know, I just want to say that, you know, whether somebody's giving to Toys for Tots or they're giving to Salvation Army or whatever the local charity is, you know, it's, it's a great thing that, as one for Beverly also. Just want to, you know, thank the community for their generosity, for all of the work that we do in the community. So again, thank you very much. Have a great Thanksgiving and a festive holiday season. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good night. Okay, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Louis Samoglia, the Director of Veteran Services, with reference to the recognition of Chief Michael R. Begonis in the Wilmington Police Department. Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to, to say a few words tonight. I just want to start out by saying Chief Begonis and anybody in his position and, and the position of a town manager or selectman or any position that is able to help people. We, you don't do it for plaques and trophies and, and accolades, but I feel it's kind of important that sometimes the people that do the, continually do the good work every day need to be recognized. And I would like to publicly thank Chief Begonis and his entire staff, a few detectives in, that have stepped way above and beyond to help some young veterans that are, that have been in a jam for, for various reasons. And the Wilmington Police Department isn't to look, isn't just looking to jam them up, it's looking to help them, literally, drive them to where they need to be or talk to them and work with them. And the chief has been doing this for years, not just with young veterans, but with young people that are doing, that are living a life of, that, it, it's not good. The drug problem in Wilmington is just like all over the country and our chief and our police department, I can honestly say, are not looking to jam these guys up, they're looking to help them and girls, unfortunately. So I just ask if Madam Chair would give me an opportunity to recognize Chief Begonis. I wanted to do this Veterans Day, but the statute didn't come in, so I couldn't do it. So I'm going to do it now. So Chief, if you wouldn't mind coming up. One more important part too of, Chief Begonis and his rifle team have always been there for me. Usually at the last minute, I ask the chief if we, we need a rifle team if mine fell through. So he's always right there with that as well. Well, Chief, thank you very much. Are you in your, your holdup?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. How's my ear? I just have to say that obviously, you know, leaders are who they are, but they're only as good as the people that they lead. And I've got a great and phenomenal department from the top down below. These people put their heartfelt efforts into this every day. As Lou expressed, the drug problem in the country is horrendous and it takes its toll on families, it takes its toll on individuals, young and old. And our commitment is not to pursue that type of mental health issue or problem that an individual has with a legal note, our desires to get them the assistance that they need. And we'll go to any, any lengths to do that, drive them anywhere, counsel them, talk with them in the middle of the night, do whatever we can do. I do have a couple of detectives, John Bossy and Chris Dindo, that do the bulk of that work for us in the police department. But it's our passion and our vision that, you know, we're here to assist, we're not here to, to give people more problems. I always said that most people that come in, there's a couple of things you can never really get away from. One is an ex-wife, the other is the IRS, the other is registered motor vehicles. And once you get into a mix with some of that, your life just can fall apart if you don't do the right things to get off from underneath it. So we're not trying to add a burden to them, which reduces their stress level enough. And we've had great success with Lou and some of his, some of his soldiers that have come back that, you know, have experienced in tough times, whether it just be through the stress of what they've experienced or to compound that with other issues beyond that. But I gotta say, Lou has done a great part with us and I appreciate it and this truly goes to my, my...
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for mentioning Detective Dindo and Bossy too. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments at all relative to that?
I don't have a question. It's just Lou, I'm awfully glad you took the, the few moments out of this meeting to recognize Chief Begonis for the specific purpose that you have in, in your work with him, but I think we all recognize the work that's going on at the police department under the direction of Chief Begonis. We are, we're very well-served. We talked a little while ago about getting a lot of bang for our buck and I, Wilmington is definitely in a very fortunate position to have such great leadership and officers. So thank you, Chief, and congratulations. Well deserved.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, moving on to our next appointment, the discussion and assignment of motions for the special town meeting.
Madam Chair, as you know, the special town meeting, which is on the 4th of December, there are four specific articles on the warrant and there would actually be five, five specific motions that will need to be entertained that evening. The first being the dispensing of, reading of the warrant. The second, which would be Article 1, which is the authorization to raise a specific amount of money for purchase of the Restucha rink. Article 2, the establishment of an enterprise fund. Article 3 would authorize the town to enter into particular arrangements with respect to managing the rink. And Article 4 is a zoning change that would allow for a shared parking. So this evening, what I'd be looking for the board to do is determine the individuals who will take the particular motions. I would note that Article 4, the zoning change, is the authorization to the rest of the rink. I would note that Article Four, the zoning article, it's my understanding and expectation that a member of the planning board will offer that motion.
Okay. So based on it being a special town meeting, and, you know, I'm not quite sure in terms of past practice with having so few articles at a town meeting, as the chair, I took the initiative to speak with Jeff regarding my feeling on the matter that relative to the first article for the appropriation of the funds for the Restucha arena, I know it's usual and customary that the chair would potentially take the lead on that. I felt that based on past history and the work, the independent research and the work that Mike Newhouse has done on this, that he would be best served to serve as the maker of the motion for that, based on his history and doing the site visit and being close to the facts and history with Restucha. So I asked Michael if he would consider taking on that task, and he said that he would. So beyond that, certainly, if anyone feels that they want to raise their hand and volunteer for one, I don't want to take that privilege away from anyone. I know that we're all working for the home team to see that this town meeting is successful. So certainly, if anyone would like to take the initiative to raise their hand and indicate that you have a passion to bring a certain article forward, feel free to do so. If not, we could always leave it to the manager to assign as well.
Well, my passion is for the whole entire thing to go through, all components. So I have no passion specific to any one motion, or any one of the articles, that is. So I have no objection to allowing the town manager to either randomly or by some other criteria, assign the remaining motions, and I certainly support your idea of having Mr. Newhouse make the primary, the primary motion.
Okay. Does everyone agree with that? Are you fine to work with that? Okay, so Jeff, do you want to just?
Sure, I mean, I guess just by random selection here, perhaps Selectman Shampoo could take the motion with regard to dispensing of reading of the warrant. Selectman McCoy, the motion relative to establishment of the enterprise fund. And Chairman O'Connell, the Article Three, which would be the authorization to enter into arrangements for management.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Sorry, Lou.
Was that Lou?
Works for me.
Okay, and when you're ready, Jeff, we can move on to communications. Thank you.
Okay, and the communications, the first item is correspondence from Comcast. We typically get this correspondence about this time every year, and it's with respect to various rate adjustments. They note that effective December 20th of this year, new prices will apply to select Xfinity TV and internet services, including regional sports fee for expanded basic and Xfinity, Latino 450 tiers, and a digital adapter additional service fee, which will be $2.99. They also note in their correspondence, they talk about their commitment to superior customer service, including 24/7 customer service, and note that they guarantee on-time arrival, or they will provide a customer credit of $20, or provide a free premium channel for three months. We have correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. This correspondence is dated the 19th of November, indicating that Governor Patrick announced mid-year budget, a mid-year budget deficit of $329 million, which resulted from various state management and administrative issues, and not specifically a shortfall in projected revenue. He's proposing $40.3 million in immediate cuts and seeking the legislature to approve an additional 25.5 million from unrestricted general government aid, which is the second major account that cities and towns receive next to Chapter 70. This would constitute about a 2.7% cut in the unrestricted government aid category. I would just note that for the town of Wilmington, the fiscal '15 unrestricted aid amount is $2,212,657. The Chapter 70 is $10,891,330. So if...
Jeff, I'm sorry. Say the little numbers, please, again.
The unrestricted general government aid is $2,212,657. And the Chapter 70 is $10,891,330. He notes there's various categories in addition to the unrestricted general government aid that could be targeted, including regional school transportation, special education reimbursement, the so-called Chapter 70 pothole account, and there are various other accounts as well. The next correspondence is, again, a bulletin from the Mass Municipal Association, essentially issued the next day. Speaker Robert DeLeo, in communication with the MMA, indicated he is rejecting the proposed 25-point million, 25.5 million in municipal aid cuts. And he notes here, quote, "Understanding the vital role cities and towns play in providing services and jobs, I will not support a reduction of unrestricted local aid," end quote, said Speaker DeLeo. Quote, "Local aid is integral to helping municipalities accurately access and plan their budgets so they can contribute to the overall growth of the Commonwealth's economy," end quote. So it appears that there'll be certainly a challenge to the governor's seeking to make, to cut local aid, and certainly at this point in time, I would just note that it's very difficult in the middle of a year to have cuts in local aid.
If I may, on that point, Madam Chair, to Jeff, so we have two pieces of communication from Mass Municipal Association, one announcing the governor's intentions, and one announcing Speaker DeLeo's rejection of that or opposition to that. But the second one goes in to talk about how there is a portion, somewhere around 40 million, that the governor, that the legislation has no impact over, or has no authority over, and that will still probably be subject to cuts by the governor. And it goes in and highlights a number of the different accounts that would make up that 40.3 million cut. So the reason I bring that up is, in your, and you're probably starting the process now, if you're not already deeply into it, your budget analysis going forward, do you, how do you factor this information into the budgetary process? I know this is mid-year now, so do you factor next year's budget with an eye towards, you know, filling in gaps that are created this year from this cut? Or how does that impact your planning?
Well, we're certainly going to have to pay close attention to what ultimately comes about the 40 million that you noted. The governor does have the authority to make those cuts essentially unilaterally. We're looking now at the degree to which those, any of those cuts may impact the town. Initial assessment, it does not appear it's going to have a significant effect. But going forward, you know, it's really going to be a combination of things this year between assessing what the ultimate impact of any cuts are in this mid-year, as well as what the priorities of the new governor are. All of that will, in some measure, shape how we go forward in projecting local aid for next year. It's, you know, we look at trends, we'll certainly look at the situation here, but it's a number of factors that go into that assessment.
That's fair. These mid-year cuts kill me, you know, because the governor has to recognize that you and your colleagues around the Commonwealth have planned and are, we're in a position now to work with what we have and with what we've anticipated, what you've anticipated, based on the budget from last year. And then it's effectively pulling the rug out from underneath you. I just find it reprehensible, and I'm hopeful that the legislators will exercise their influence over the governor. But thank you very much.
Next, under correspondence, we have a letter from Paul Stedman, Acting District Highway Director of the Mass DOT. He's advising that the town's request for improvements to Route 38 from the intersection of Route 62 to the Woburn City Line has been deemed eligible by their project review committee. The estimated project cost is a little over $9 million, $9,108,000 at this point. Included within that, that budget would be the estimated construction cost, project design, construction engineering, construction contingency, police details, utility relocation costs, any right-of-way procurement, and any costs associated with the environmental permitting. This eligibility does not represent a commitment at this point in terms of funds, but it does indicate that we are eligible to go forward and seek a funding commitment. We also have correspondence from Green International. You may recall that several months ago, when this project was brought forward for consideration by the board, Koish Akora, who is the principal at Green International, went through the project with the board, and he provides some greater measure of detail and indicates that the first step in the process is for Mass DOT to establish eligibility for state and federal funding. The next step would be that the town would need to fund the design engineering at the 25% level. The estimated cost for the design, for the entire stretch from the 62 bridge down to the Woburn City Line is approximately $350,000. We would hire an engineering firm to do that design. They would prepare the design with town input and then submit that document to Mass DOT for review and approval. Once Mass DOT, or if they should approve the 25% design, prior to that approval, there would be a public hearing, which would be held here for input, and then they would bring that back and ultimately make a decision on the 25% design. At that point, the project, if it's approved, would be considered a real project, so to speak, and eligible for inclusion on the Transportation Improvement Plan Funding Schedule. The town, and then with Mass DOT's support, would petition the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization to request federal aid and construction funding on the tip. Then, at that point, the programming on the tip would be requested in the fiscal, federal fiscal year that we're anticipating the actual construction to occur. There would be a final design preparation, both 75% and 100% design completion. Just to provide the board with a very rough estimate at this point, you'll note in the memo from Koish Akora, he's suggesting the prospect of 25% design being completed in 2016. I've had some conversations with Mike Woods, Public Works Director, and indicated, at this point, I'm not prepared to go forward with the 25% for this fiscal year, so it's likely, in almost a foregone conclusion, I would say that we would look to do this in 2016. So 25% design, my expectation would be to start that in July of 2016, complete the 25% design by the end of calendar 17. Final design could be completed at the end of calendar 18. And then the project could be programmed on the tip for federal funding in the federal fiscal year of 2019, which their fiscal year begins October 1st of 2018. So, you know, it is a little, a few years down the line. And I would just point out that, as previously noted, there is a public process here, an opportunity for both the board of selectmen and the general public to weigh in in terms of the ultimate design. So this is a very preliminary step.
Moving on to Board to Consider.
Board to Consider, the board has a request from Deborah Potter, Boston Auction and Antiques LLC, for an auctioneer's, annual auctioneer's license for property located at 355 Middlesex Avenue. The request has been presented to the police chief, and he notes the Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the annual auctioneer's license request of Miss Deborah A. Potter, corporate officer of Boston Auctions and Antiques LLC, 355 Middlesex Ave., Suite 11, Wilmington, Mass. We recommend approval of this application.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
We'll grant the application as presented.
Okay, what's been made? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, we have another application, Form 43. This, again, is the enterprise, is the Virch LLC, doing business as Colonial Park Liquors, a property located at 35 Lowell Street. They're requesting to change their Sunday hours. Currently, they're, they open at noon, they're looking to open, or have the ability to open from 10 o'clock on. As previously noted, this is, I think, the third or fourth request now we've received. Per the ABCC, the board of selectmen simply is being advised of this. The board does not have any authority to deny that right, but does have to sign the Form 43.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Okay, thank you. New business committee reports. I'll start with my left, please.
No committee reports, just, it's Monday of Thanksgiving week, so I wish you all, and anyone that happens to be listening, a wonderful Thanksgiving week.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shampoo. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Good, okay.
Just like to publicly thank everybody that came out for the Veterans Day ceremonies. I thought it was wonderful. Every year, more and more people attend, and a lot of children like to see that, and thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Just one very brief item to the manager. I understand, given weather and some other conditions, you know, an inordinate amount of leaf pickup this year and that kind of thing, things were delayed a bit. If folks have specific questions about their neighborhood and when they're on the calendar, to whom should they direct those requests? I assume to Jamie?
Yes, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Selectman Newhouse. I was going to just note that the leaf collection has been running behind this year, in part, you know, obviously, the amount of leaf, leaves being put out at the curb is certainly a great quantity, but beyond that, the contractor that we use, Northside Cardage, who actually is responsible for collecting our trash as well, has had a few equipment breakdowns. They service a number of other communities, so they're kind of stretched at this point in terms of bringing in additional vehicles. But I do want to just note that the collection, which was previously posted as being, collection running through Saturday, November 29th, will continue. So this week, with the holiday being on Thursday, the Thursday collection gets pushed to Friday and Friday to Saturday. But the point being that any yard waste that is placed out at the curb on the 29th of November will be collected. If it turns out it needs to be collected at the beginning of the following week, that'll be the case, but we're sticking to our commitment that whatever is out on the curb as of the 29th will be collected by Northside. Certainly, as probably many people know, there is the option of taking the material down to the yard waste center. We recognize that not everybody has the ability to do that. Certainly, if you don't have a pickup truck or a vehicle that's, where you're able to do that, it's easier to do it at the curb, but that option is... do that, it's easier to do it at the curb, but that option is available as well.
Thank you.
You all set, Michael?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I don't have anything other than to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving as well.
Just real quickly, I wanted to say, I know it's Thanksgiving coming up, and want to say, "Go Wildcats Thanksgiving morning." I've got that. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so, moving on to important dates.
Actually, Madam Chair, before we get to that, if I could just make one other announcement. It was brought to our attention, actually, by a resident, that the calendar that we put out, the town calendar, one of the things that was added this year was just a little symbol, the recycling symbol, to represent when the recyclables are picked up, and there's, you know, the blue and green representing the various weeks. As it turns out, there was a mistake in terms of the sequencing of that. And just reading from what we've posted on our website, it has been brought to the town's attention that there is an error contained in the 2014-15 municipal calendar. For the first time, the town added the recycling symbol to the calendar. However, the week of November 30 through December 5 was missed, and therefore, from November 30 through April 30, 2015, the recycling information is not correct. Please refer to the recycling calendar mailed to each household for scheduling information. Should you have any questions, please contact the DPW at 978-658-4481. We regret the inconvenience. So, everybody should have been received in the mail a recycling calendar, and that's what they ought to be using to be clear on when to put out your recyclables.
Okay. Thank you.
Important dates. Again, through the 29th, we have curbside collection of yard waste, brush drop-off on the 26th, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. November 27th, Thanksgiving Day, town offices will be closed. November 29th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Once again, brush drop-off on December 3rd, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. December 4th is Santa's Workshop, Town Hall, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. December 4th, special town meeting, Wilmington Middle School Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. December 6th, breakfast with Santa. December 6th, also the Christmas tree lighting at the Town Common. December 6th is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then the 6th and the 7th of December is the Festival of Trees, Villanova Hall. The 7th is Holiday Social, Hinden Tavern, 1 to 4. And then the next selectman's meeting is on the 15th of December at 7:00 o'clock.
Anything else that you have, Jeff? Okay. All right, move to the chair. Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Unanimous. Thank you.